Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for everybody attending this new and historical moment for our town of East Long Meadow. And my name is Tom Florence, the town clerk, and I'd like to open the first meeting of the newly-elected town council for today, July 1st, 2016. Could you please rise so we can recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like now for all of us to offer a moment of silence, especially to our troops serving abroad, and to reflect in honor our country as we celebrate our 240th anniversary slash birthday of our independence this Monday. Thank you. I'd like to now make an announcement in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 30A, Section 20 of those in the room who'll be taping the meeting.
Chris Kedrow, the moderator.
Sean Dean, Springfield Republican.
You have someone in the back.
Oh, the photos are fine.
What about Channel 22?
Mike Mascherano, Mike Cool, WWLP.
Very good. Thank you very much. Our first order of business today will be the swearing-in of our newly-elected town council members. So if all of you could line up in front of that back wall there. So you fit him nicely between the flags. Put it that anyway. Now could all of you please raise your right hand? Do you, Donald J. Anderson, Paul L. Federici, Joseph A. Ford, Kathleen G. Hill, Michael J. Kane, Eric H. Madison, and Kevin M. Manley solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as newly-elected members of the first town council for the town of East Long Meadow in accordance with the bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Very good. Thank you very much. And now for the archives. There are two official sets of documents right behind you if I could have you sign. Thanks for your patience, everybody. It's good to get that out of the way all at one time while everybody's here. Okay, next on the agenda will be a discussion to establish town council priorities. Following the election of a council president, that person will take over and chair the remainder of today's meeting according to the agenda. So with that said, the first order of business would be to organize and name the council president and vice president.
So do we propose candidates?
Right.
Okay. I know there's two candidates, I'd like to speak, I know there's two candidates who are interested in this position, both are highly qualified. I would like to propose Eric Madison only because, and I appreciate everything he's done for me. You don't know how much I appreciate everything he's done for me since he's gotten here. But in my thought process, as being a seven-plus-year selectman with five years as chairman, I know my first year, there's absolutely no way I could have done it, and obviously I could be an exception, probably am. But it takes a little while to learn the ropes and to learn Robert's Rules of Order, and I just thought that with this change, you know, Eric helped write the charter, he's been on appropriations, he's been chairman, he's been on Capitol, and I just thought that to get the ball rolling for the first year, that I thought Eric would be qualified.
Do I hear a second?
I proposed it, so I can't.
You proposed it, okay.
I think he seconded it, right?
Can I second myself?
Okay, yeah, you can. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Do I hear any other nominations?
Well, I'll make the nomination. I nominate Kevin Manley to serve as president. Kevin was by far the people's choice as far as the number-one vote for the seven top finishers. You know, I've served, like I said, a number of years, at least five years, as committee chairman of a five-person board. And I understand that there's always going to be the learning curve, but I still, in my opinion, have tremendous respect in the will of the people. I've had a short time to know Kevin, and it's also Eric, and both are equally qualified, albeit Eric does have a better understanding of the charter because of his intimate involvement with it. But I see the position as the president of this council as being our president. We're all going to be junior presidents, if you will, with him being more titular, but at the same time offering his own perspective and also, as I keep reeling back to the will of the people. So I could keep going, but I'll make that motion, please.
I'll second.
So I would offer out that if each of us want to take a couple of minutes, starter case to the folks before the vote is cast. Okay. So I think all of you know somewhat my qualifications and my history of working with the town. I have a lot of experience operating on a boards and committees and commissions that follow the prudential rules, if you will. As Paul outlined, I think I have a pretty good sense of the town budget and the town charter. I really do believe that it's essential that this council, as I know you all do, follow the charter closely. And I do believe that that knowledge is going to be pivotal in steering this committee as we move forward. I would just ask you to consider the experience level as we move forward. I also respect that Kevin was the top vote getter, and I respect Kevin. And by all means, I'm sure, win or lose, both of us intend to work well with each other. I don't think that's an issue. But I do believe that I have the experience that would set this council ahead, if you will.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm put in to be the president of the council because I felt that the public asked me to take this position. They showed their faith and their trust in my abilities to get the job done and do what they want as the top vote getter. I didn't kind of reach out for that as a crutch or anything, but to carry on what I started as a selectman. Granted, I don't have the charter experience that Eric has. I know he brings a lot to the table with that. But again, we're all going to work together. My plan is just to build teamwork with everybody here, work with everybody in a professional manner, and respect everybody's opinions. I obviously was a selectman for the short term, but again, I get the most votes. I think the people have the faith in me to do the job. Robert's Rules of Order and all that, I can, you know, we'll figure that out as we go. It's not, I don't think that's a pivotal component to make you qualified or not qualified to serve as a president of the board. I think if you ask the department heads, and since I've been a selectman, I've been in town hall and working with the boards, commissions, I dove right into it. It wasn't like I stayed at home and, you know, don't do anything. So I already have a good relationship, good understanding of everything that's going on in the town already, some of the needs that we need to address right away in various departments, not just certain departments. Because I've tried to make my effort to meet with all the department heads. I've gone to every department head meeting. So I have a pretty good understanding overall, generally, of what we need, where we need to go. Again, I respect Eric. Him and I have had some significant dialogue, and, you know, it's up to you to make the choice. And, you know, I'm going to work with everybody regardless of how the situation turns out. So, thank you.
Is it call of vote?
Thank you. I'd call a vote right now. The two people nominated, Eric and Kevin, all in favor of Eric being president of the town council, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Kevin being president of the town council, say aye.
Aye.
And Kevin has it.
All right, with that, now we need to do the vice president. And I know there's two candidates now who express interest in being the vice president of the council. It's Kathy Hill and Paul Federici.
I would make a motion to nominate Paul Federici. Primarily, my reason is he's got a number of years' experience and historical knowledge that I think is going to be critical to the leadership of this council. And I'd like to see him in a position where he could capitalize on, where we could capitalize on that historical knowledge.
I'll second.
I'll nominate myself.
Oh, all right.
For vice president.
I'll second.
Go ahead if you want to.
I guess my position is repetitious of the remarks that have been made thus far about everyone's willingness around the table to work together in an open and honest manner, and I stand behind that commitment as well. I am no stranger to the workings of government in East Long Meadow. I had the honor and privilege for 21 years to work at Burj Lane Park, first as a social studies teacher, and then the last 16 years, I had the extreme honor and privilege of being its principal. I helped guide it through from the original Burj Lane Park to a brand-new building. I've spent a number of innumerable hours on building committees, and that building I'm as proud of as the home I live in on Kimby Road. In fact, some, my own family included, said I took better care of Burj Lane than I did at home. However, I've had the opportunity during that tenure to work with all of the department heads. I understand the capital planning process. I understand grant writing and the ability to recruit funds and so forth for the town. And, but most importantly, we're here today because the people in this town looked for and voted for a new charter, a new form of government, and they asked for change. And some new blood and some new faces. And though I have served in the school department, I'm retired now for three years, and I believe I bring that new face to the table. So with that said, I respectfully ask for your consideration.
Well, obviously, many of you know me. I've had seven-plus years on the Board of Selectmen. I've been chairman for, I think, five of those seven years, a lot of times, not necessarily because of what I've done, but what other people haven't done, so I'll be honest about that. But I do have, you know, a good working knowledge of the whole process of town government, of the budgetary process. I've been involved in seven budgets over the years. I've, you know, we've had situations where there are only two selectmen, where we had to step up to the plate and, you know, take care of the town when we were shorthanded. And I feel like I have a good knowledge of all of the workings of the town, and I think I bring something to the table, even though I'm not a new face. And I don't want to belabor this issue, but if we go along with some of the thinking in the presidential vote, I was second in the election for whatever that's worth. I don't put much faith in where you finish. But like I said, I do bring a lot to the table, and I look for your support. And, oh, and either way, whether it be a Kathy or I, it's going to be a good choice, so.
Any further discussion?
The only thing I wanted to just add is just, you know, you can take this as a side comment, but we are here because of Paul Federici, because he stood up and he said, "This can't happen." And so for that, I'd like to applaud because without his leadership, we would not be gathering right now. So, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Tom. With that said, I'd like to take a vote. All in favor of Paul Federici to be vice president of the town council, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Kathleen Hill to be vice president of the town council, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I just want to make sure, those in favor of Paul Federici, can you please stand?
Couldn't just raise our hands.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, four votes to three. Paul will be vice president of the council.
Congratulations, Paul.
So now, Tom, we have...
Okay, so with that business behind us, the next agenda will be turned over now, the agenda to the council president. I believe it's a passing of the gavel.
Yes, so now we have a ceremonial passing of the gavel. I believe that Russ Dender, the last town moderator, is here to, I'll say sort of make a presentation, Russ, so you're up.
Very short. Kevin, congratulations.
Thank you.
So this is the ceremonial passing of the gavel. This gavel was used to adjourn the last annual town meeting, preferably, in the history of the town of East Long Meadow. We thought it'd be appropriate that you have this, you start the meeting, and continue form of government for the town of East Long Meadow, and take us into a bright future. Thank you very much.
All right, so the next agenda item is going to be the appointment of an interim town manager. I would say that the term interim's a little bit, it's more like an acting.
It would be acting.
Exactly. Interim is not really what we're doing today.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that this council appoint as acting town manager for a duration not to exceed 30 days, whose authorities will be as outlined in the charter, to Robert Parent, our current DPW director.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Can I just add to that? My apologies.
Yeah.
Further, in the motion, that after discussion with Mr. Parent, that compensation for such work, that this council authorize one additional week's vacation to be used at his choosing of time.
Do I need a second again?
I would second again.
Just nod them up to July. Any other, any further discussion on that?
I had an opportunity to speak with Bob yesterday. I'm glad I took that opportunity. It's a very selfless thing that he's doing. Requires a lot of extra time and attention. He has a full-time job as it is. I think he's more than qualified with his background, and I'm looking forward to working with him, so appreciate him stepping up.
And one other comment that he made in his email with his background is, in no way is he interested in the permanent position. So that's just, he truly is just committed to this acting position for the short term.
I would also make just a note, as part of the record, that I also thought that our town accountant, Sarah Menard, would be an excellent candidate. I did approach Ms. Menard and asked if she would be interested in having her name brought forward. She has just returned from maternity leave, having her second child. She felt like the commitments of her current position, along with her commitments at home, that she'd be committing to something she would have trouble fulfilling, so she bowed out. But I did want to just make note that we have several talented department heads to choose from.
Absolutely, definitely. Any further discussion on it? Take a vote. All in favor of Bob Parent being the acting town manager?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Do we have to vote on the week's vacation?
It was in there, right?
I think it was all part of the same motion.
All part of the same package?
Before we leave that topic, if I may, I'd like to also throw out for consideration to the council, having served in a capacity as a department head and an acting town manager in the past, I would, in fact, I'll even put it in the form of a motion, and we'll see where everybody takes it from there. But I would make a motion that all communication from this council go through the council president to the acting town manager, and that we don't all act independently. It's going to be difficult enough for him to be facing the challenges of the acting town manager, the construction season as DPW director, without having to respond to seven of us. So I'd make that motion.
I'll modify that motion only in cases where the acting town manager directly approaches each of us for individual. That would be the one exception.
You don't have to modify. I'll modify my own. We don't have to take two votes. How's that?
Efficiency, I love it.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that one's good. So now we're on to the town manager search. Item one under appointment of an interim, acting town manager. We actually have had a presentation done by the Collins Center, which is a consulting firm out of UMass Boston, who came and gave a presentation on what they would like to do for, what they can provide for us as a town for, as far as the search goes. So I just wanted to see, do we want to discuss that now?
Why don't we take this in two chunks? Why don't we start with the search for an interim?
Okay.
And then we'll take the search for a permanent as a separate chunk, that way we don't confuse the two.
Right, no, that's good, yeah. So I know that we have put it out sort of generally that we were interested in obtaining an interim town manager. I know it's a difficult season sort of to recruit those individuals that are able to work that 960-hours a year because of the summer and vacations and so on and so forth, but I know we have received one resume so far for the interim position. I know we have a little bit more time because we just made Bob acting, so is anybody want to discuss?
I would make the suggestion that we advertise in the Beacon, the MMA publication.
Yeah.
Like ASAP, and with a deadline soon for applications.
And that was also, just to cut you off, Eric, but that was also a recommendation made by Collins Center. When I spoke to their representative after our meeting, she said, you know, it's probably a good way to get it to even more people than they were able to reach, so I think that we should probably look into it.
So we want to look at, like, potential, I'm not sure when, it's a monthly publication, isn't it?
Yeah.
But we probably missed...
But they do the online.
They do online.
I'm sure they do online.
They do online.
They do online.
So it'll be a continuing...
Let's look at some dates then, because we just appointed Bob for 30 days.
Right.
So I would say if we, during the week of the 18th, is the deadline for application, if we interview on the week of the 25th?
Out of curiosity, to get these, is there an advertising deadline? Like, you know, we know reminder in the newspaper, you have to have things in my certain for publication, or is this totally online?
I think we're going to miss the print even for July. So I think we're going to have to rely on the online, which obviously is viewed by the folks that we're looking to view it.
There's a direct timeline on that one, yeah.
So what was your suggested date, Eric, the 18th?
I would suggest that, you know, everything be in by Monday, the 18th, close of business day.
Yep.
And that would then give us that week to meet, go through the applicant package. I don't know how many we'll get, so we might interview them all if we don't get that many. But we'll figure it out during that week, and then interview them during the week of the 25th, which would hopefully bring us to a start date at the beginning of August.
That sounds reasonable.
If no one disagrees, I would, you know, authorize the council president to work with the MMA and the publication rather than running everything past us next, because times of essence.
And we don't meet again until 12th, so...
Also, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary from the Collins Institute spoke to us a couple of weeks ago. Did she not say that, you know, that they would do this gratis to help us on the interim basis? That if we hired them for the permanent position, that this would be complimentary, correct?
Yeah.
I believe she said, I believe she said they would help get some candidates' names, but I don't think she said they wouldn't vet them or anything like that.
No, no, they wouldn't vet them, but at least they'll help bring people to us.
Based on her last email, you know, I think the resources that they had or the initial kind of response, there was one candidate, and then others were concerned with the length of drive, so I don't know where those candidates reside. So it seems like there was only, you know, when she did that initial search and then made it clear that they wanted then step away from that process and help, you know, for that permanent placement.
They did post, that's I believe how we got our first resume? That one resume that we got was actually through them putting it out that they were looking, that we were looking. One of the geographic challenges that we have is a lot of these 960-hour people are from eastern Massachusetts, so a lot of them don't want to travel or whatever, but MMA does have another list. I always worked with them in the beginning, trying to get some names. I had four names, and they were kind of on hold, so I can touch back base with them and see if any of those candidates are viable for interviews.
You want any help drafting the job description, let me know. I'll be glad to help.
Yeah, thanks. So we're going to stick with the 18th?
Do you want all that in the form of a motion?
I think it probably should be in the form of a motion.
So I would make a motion that we advertise with the MMA electronic publications, print if we have the time, I don't believe we do, but print if we have the time. Further, that we authorize the president to draft the job description for advertisement and to move forward with that. And that the application deadline is Monday, the 18th, at close of business.
Second that.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so the 18th it is. Now we get the Collins Center Professional Agreement. That's going to be under number two, but which is, that's for our permanent town manager position, Eric, so...
Yeah, I'm saying, same thing, this dispensed with the first part, so, yeah.
Right, well, that's where we're moving, right, to the next, we chunked it up in two pieces, so...
So, I think for clarity, it's worth stating that, um, the, the Collins Center is, um, a quasi, um, governmental agency, uh, through the University of Massachusetts. Uh, and therefore we can, um, just enter into a intergovernmental agreement with them, uh, to, to conduct these services. Um, so I would, um, I would then make a motion, I think we all saw the presentation, I think we all felt the same way. Uh, I would make a motion that we authorize the president to enter into such professional agreement after, um, reviewing such with town, uh, the town attorney.
So can I ask a, uh, point of clarification? So if, uh, we enter into an agreement and they're not able to help place someone, what is our financial responsibility under that agreement? Have you guys seen that yet?
Um, no, I have not seen the agreement. My sense is, uh, first off, I've never seen that encountered. But, um, I suppose anything is a possibility, especially in this town. So. So, uh, my sense is if they perform the services that we've asked them to perform and it come, comes up without a candidate that we wanna hire, that they've still performed the services and we're still obligated to, to, to paying them.
And so then, my second part of that question would be, if someone doesn't go through them and knocks on our door tomorrow, that didn't get vetted through their services, or, or are we supposed to take all candidates and push them there regardless?
You send them to the Collins Center.
You send them to the Collins.
And then they'll, they'll help us, even if someone comes to us without directly going to them first.
Yeah, if they come forward, just refer them to, to the Collins Center.
Yeah, and, and I was just asking for clarification. I was really impressed with the presentation. Uh, I did some additional research and they have a, a fantastic reputation. Um, and I don't know that we could do better, so I'm, I'm definitely in favor.
And you pointed out at that meeting, their, their value for the price is, is a lot better than a headhunter agency or anything like that.
They're, they're, would end up being, you know, about, uh, you know, a third of what we would if we went to a normal, you know, headhunter.
The time savings is one.
The time savings of not having to go out to an RFP.
And this is their specialty. They're not, you know, this is their, their specialty, uh, and it's a niche specialty. We're looking for something very specific that the average headhunter most likely would not have a good, you know, client base for, so, yeah, I agree.
So the folks understand, it's also worth noting, their fees are based upon, they're not-for-profit. So their fees essentially cover their costs. That's why they're so much less expensive.
I'm good.
So a motion was made, I think seconded by Mr. Petterici?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor too, by the way. I was in the middle of a thought, sorry, I missed that. And so now we're gonna go to the establishment of interim rules, and I'm gonna touch with you, Eric, on this because I know you went through the, and gave us a document?
Yeah, I did. Um, so, uh, obviously under the charter, we have to, um, we have to establish interim, um, rules. And by interim, uh, we also have to establish a, a subcommittee to start to work to develop, um, you know, rules that would, would become a permanent set of our records. Um, so, I'm trying to think, who was it? Did somebody had reached out to the Collins, was it Don? Had reached out to the Collins Center, um, and they forwarded, through the Collins Center, had forwarded a number of documents. I had some time on my hands, so I, I looked through the documents and the one that I found that I thought close, is closely matched our charter, was the Barnstable document.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, it didn't mean there didn't have to be some alterations, obviously, there, there did, because, you know, they weren't written for our charter. But, um, so I went through that document, um, and, uh, that the document that I sent out to all of you was an edification. The changes that I made were based, um, pretty much with, you know, to bring it in line with our charter. Doesn't mean we have to adopt every rule that's in there. Um, I threw it out there for every, now obviously the document I sent out was with strikeouts and the changes in red, so that was easy for you guys to pick out what was the original document, what my suggested changes are. I think it's, it might not be as fully comprehensive as we one day want our, our, um, rules to be.
No, it was a pretty good start.
But I think it's comprehensive enough, yeah, to give us a good start and, and it's, I don't think it's so complex that it's gonna confuse us that we're gonna be able to, uh, I think we're gonna be able to follow it fairly, fairly well, fairly closely.
And just to touch on that, I just wanted to say thank you to you because I know you went through that, struck out all those things and made all the changes and went, obviously matched it up to the charter, so I know you probably have better things to do on a Friday night or Thursday night, whatever.
Obviously, that night I didn't, but, uh,
But it was a lot of work, so.
I did make a note after the end of, uh, the, the notes in red in parentheses, such, for example, changes consistent with Article Two, Section Three of the Charter, those are just for our notes, so if you wanted to say, well, why did he make that change? You could go look at the charter and at that section and you go, oh, that's why, so it was just for you to be able to reference it.
But I mean, I read the Barnstable ones, I was kinda like on the same thought, I think Don, you were as well.
What I was gonna suggest is, um, and we can decide later while we form a motion, is, is getting our town council involved, of course, to review. He was, I believe, also in, intimately involved with, uh, the rules and regs, I mean, the rules for the town, uh, city or town of West Springfield. So he can bring in, and just discussing with him, he, he brought some good ideas in terms of, you know, proper, how to manage our open forum and things of that nature. So, um, so, uh, what I'd like to do, we, we can do this after, is, is get, uh, a way to get this draft over for your review and comment as, as well.
That's a good idea, I think, and then.
Well, I think we can still pass them tonight conditional upon approval by town.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I'm fine with that too.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Obviously, we don't want anything that's not legal or in contradiction to Mass General Law, if that makes sense.
Right.
I know we started to talk about it last time about, um, how to handle the open forum. Give the people the voice, give them an opportunity. Are we still planning on having them sign up prior to and do that at the beginning of the meeting?
Actually, the, the, the rule in here, I've gotta find the section.
It's actually at four thirty or something, right, Eric? The day of, five forty, four?
It is like four thirty. Now, they have, in, in Barnstable, they have a council moderator. I had to strike that out and use the town manager's office, um, for, for ours, um, but, um, I have to find the section.
It's five F.
Five F, thank you.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm asking, because it looked like in that Barnstable draft that they were asking for a longer period of time? Unless I misread that, I thought it was.
No, the day of.
No, four thirty on the day of the council meeting.
We actually had, originally, selectmen had a longer period of time because we had it on the agenda, so it was a forty-eight hour
Okay.
period where we had required anybody that wanted to speak at the open forum from the selectmen to sign up so they could get on the agenda, post it with the open meeting while it was forty-eight hours, so this is actually less
Hour and a half before the meeting, it's pretty good.
Actually, you know what? It's not a long section, may I read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, since this was a, a pretty heavy topic of discussion at our last meeting, and I think all of us agree this is an important element to bring forth from the charter, so. Okay, so five F, public comment. At each regular meeting, the council shall be, uh, of the council, there shall be a period set aside for public comment. Any member of the public desiring to address the council may reserve a place on the agenda with the council, I'm sorry, I struck that out, with the town manager's office by four thirty on the day of the council meeting. Each person on the public comment docket shall be recognized by the chair and shall state his or her, uh, name and address for the record. Time allowed for public comment will be at the discretion of the chair. We need to change chair to the president, but, um, I missed that. So it will be at the discretion of the president. For the most part, public comment will be limited to three minutes for each individual speaking. All remarks and questions shall be addressed, uh, to the council as a whole through the president and not to any member thereof. No member other than members of the council and the person having the floor shall enter into discussion either directly or through a member of the council without permission of the presiding officer. If any person persists in disorderly behavior after warning from the, the president, uh, I'm sorry, presiding officer, the presiding officer may order that person to leave the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Twenty-three C. So I think it encompasses a lot of what we talked about. It allows that interaction back and forth. Um, at the same time, it keeps a decorum, um, and maintains a decorum.
And it doesn't have that long window where people might, an hour or something before the meeting, people might wanna, makes it easier for the public to actually sign up, I guess, rather than send it two days ahead of time.
In the, the, um, although it, it offers a time limitation, and there has to be time limitations if we're gonna get through our agenda, but it's also easily waived by the council president when a topic is as such that it requires further attention to the public comment section, so.
Comment, um, place on the agenda through the town manager's office. May I suggest perhaps through the town clerk's office? Because, you know, that, that's, you know, the town clerk is now gonna be serving as, you know, is now serving as our clerk. And, um, and you would be the one posting and so forth, so I was just, just a thought.
I was thinking though that the president and the town manager will ultimately be the one setting the agenda.
I know, I'm just trying to think of what.
So they need to have that info.
Okay.
So my question would be, that said, if the president and the town manager have to have that info and agree on it by four thirty, Mr. Florence, will you have enough time to then make those corrections for a six o'clock meeting?
Especially when the town hall closes at four.
Right. Well, the thing I think is that it's gonna be under public forum, right? Which will be most likely a standard piece on the agenda. And then, whenever we decide, probably the beginning, I think we said in the meeting, in the beginning of the meeting. So specific names are gonna be on there, we're just gonna know at fourth, by four thirty, four, or we can change it to four o'clock as well if that's some, that works better for the, you know, town manager or whatnot, but that's covered under the public forum piece, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
And it's not our intention then to list names, as long as we don't.
No, they just have to come up and tell us, yeah.
That's okay.
I, I think it's public forum.
That's fine.
Advises the public that that's gonna occur.
Right, and once it's established, I think, and people.
Well, once it becomes a matter of habit.
Right, right.
So are we saying four thirty, even though town halls close at four?
I would say four, in this case.
As long as the town hall decides to open.
I would, I would say four.
Say four, makes sense.
So you want that changed to four?
Yeah.
So, let me make some notes here. Did everybody get a chance to look it over? Were there other changes that?
I appreciate your edits, but, uh, I will look at, I'll be some of my, uh, weekend reading. I had a fairly heavy plate this morning with end of month closings.
I will say I had the opportunity to, uh, read all four documents. I feel the Barnstable one, and I would agree. It, it just, it appears much more user-friendly
Yeah, it does.
to the layperson. Some of the other towns', uh, terminology was at a
More legalese.
loftier, loft, more lofty level or were more legalese and it just felt too, I don't think it has to be so formal that, you know, uh, that it's designed strictly for lawyers to interpret. Yet, certainly we don't want something that's so loose that it's, you know, a social gathering, for lack of a better analogy. It just struck me as being straightforward and user-friendly and, uh, as reasonably aligned as possible with the charter for right now. Assuming we modify with the strikeouts and such, as we're doing now.
So, a couple other points I'll call out to you that, um, based on our conversation last week. Under, uh, Rule Six parliamentary guard, guidelines, um, it's written rather loosely. Um, it allows us to utilize, um, other examples of parliamentary procedure, um, such as state and local legislative bodies. But it references, uh, Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure versus, um, um, Robert's Rules. I, I don't know what everybody else's experiences, I mean, if you've, even Robert's Rules for Dummies confuses me, that's a, it's a tough document. Uh, I, I'm not a particular Robert's Rules fans. I'm a fan of parliamentary guidelines, but not of.
Yeah, we had this discussion.
Yeah, um, so, I, I was okay with leaving that in there. If you've, if everyone feels differently, that's easily changed.
Have, I have not, um, been familiar or have read the Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedures, has anybody at the table or Mr. Donahue, are you?
Probably she was Robert Rules.
No, but unfortunately I read the Robert Rules.
Right, yes, we all struggled with that one time or another.
It's a life-altering experience.
It is.
Actually bought a book while, put that back.
Yeah. Town, town council, Jim, do you know any towns around here that use Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure?
I'm not aware of any, but, I mean, it's a procedure, you know, through your local rules and how they work for you. A decade or so ago, when West Springfield was going through this process, the council had much more time to prepare for its first session than the voters gave you, and they had six months basically to do this. And, uh, it went through a fairly extensive process of adopting procedural rules for the handling of procedures in the council. And then, and then used, I think, uh, reviewed and felt worked for them, that council, and then used Robert's Rules as a default. If it was an issue that was not addressed or came up that wasn't considered in their own local rules, you fell back to the requirements of Robert's Rules. And that seems to have worked fairly well for West Springfield over the years. You know, covering local procedures such as, uh, reconsideration, when it has to be done, how it has to be done. If you get into Robert's Rules, it has to be fairly technical sometimes about what has to be done. And the purpose was not to prevent people or council members from being able to, to do that, but to, to allow it in such a way that it made sense without having to go through the rule books every time, which were received. So, it's a product that you, you, you overreaching and have a, a fallback here as Robert's or some other supplement as the one to, to fill in any gaps that might have, because your local rules you're gonna use every day. And, and a lot of the procedures in the specialized rule books, you're gonna deal with once every three years maybe, if not an issue, so. It's something to consider, basically.
Yeah, I, I would just make the point that these are interim.
Right.
That we still have to assemble the committee, we still have to, but.
I think it would behoove us if, um, in the interim, we took the time to at least, um, browse both documents and, um, see which one is much more
User-friendly.
user-friendly for us and the public, um, and make a decision when we enter into formal rules.
We can, we can edit this at any time. If we adopt it today, we can edit it at, at any time. And again, it is an interim document until we develop.
And I'm with, kinda along to your suggestion, this is to adopt it with the pen and the approval of
Yeah.
town council and, and it's sort of have to be made in the interim, you know, there's probably some things that we need, like you just caught one with the.
Yeah, I'll go through that, um, cause it referred to the chair
Chair, that's right.
and not council president. Um, it's just a terminology that, that matches their council and ours.
Semantics more than anybody.
Yeah.
Nonetheless.
The only time I'm gonna make is if, um, say, planning board, school committee, other boards have been historically using Robert's Rules and we have joint meetings together. That we may have a ripple effect if we adapt to Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure. Then we have joint meetings, we have this kind of crossover rules. If they're hosting it, then we use Robert's Rules and over here. And again, uh, town council makes a great point. It's only a fallback, it's like an emergency. And I know we have, Rob, and we've been using Robert's Rules all the years. I was on, that hasn't changed, so. And it's always been a, you know, so that's just my, my take is that what we do may affect us as we meet with other boards.
I can change it to Robert's Rules.
That's a good point.
I'm, really is not a big deal.
I don't think that's gonna be.
It's a, it's a, it's a case of emergency.
Probably not ever gonna be a sticking point for us.
Whenever, is every, if everybody's more familiar with Robert's Rules, I'll change that to Robert's Rules.
Anybody. So, you know.
I'm not familiar with either, so, you know, for, for me, there's, there's a learning curve, you know? I've already started to explore Robert's Rules, whatever, I'll defer, I'll defer to you guys.
I would say change it to Robert's Rules.
And I'm, under the impression from my little bit of research on Amazon about the cost of that book, which is nominal, it's now referred to as Robert's Rules of Order, comma, newly revised.
Oh, alright.
So I'll, I'll make that change. The other thing I wanted to call to everybody's attention that the regular meeting agenda is typically set in the rules. Under Rule Five E, it would start with roll call, pledge of allegiance, moment of silence, public comment section, council response to public comment, town manager communications, act on the minutes excluding executive session. Uh, eight would be communication from elected officials, boards, commissions, staff correspondence, announcements, and committee reports. Nine would be, uh, orders of the day. Orders of the day would include old business and new business, uh, and then ten would be adjournment. Seems to make sense the way most meetings. Seems to make sense, the way most meetings I've ever attended run, they've run pretty similar, maybe with some variation, but everybody okay with leaving it that way?
Yes.
Those were the big ones that I thought I wanted to call out to you before we took any further action. It seems like, so with that, then I guess I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that we adopt only as our interim rules, this document as amended as we discussed in the changes in Rule Five F and the changes to Roberts Rules.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Are we defining interim in a loose enough, loosely enough way to allow us the time to find a permanent town manager first and then go forward?
No, the rules, adopting the rules.
No, I understand that, but I, what, how we, what are we calling interim? Are we giving ourselves like four or six months?
The charter calls it interim. You know what, there's reference in there about assembling a committee to develop, submit rules. I don't know the specifics of that language off the top of my head. So it is in the charter, and we do have to address it in a specified amount of time. What that time is off the top of my head, I don't recall.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Alright.
Okay, I will make those changes, I'll get a copy to Town Council. Actually, I'll, I'll forward it to the town manager, we can forward it to Town Council, I guess would be the more appropriate way. And I'll circulate it electronically to all of you, I'll post it, actually, I'll post it on the Google Drive. Is everybody good with using the Google Drive for?
Yes.
For that, for the sharing of documents?
Yeah.
Good?
Yes.
It's nice too, because you can make changes.
Okay, so that's what I'll do.
We are onto item, agenda, agenda item four, discussion to establish meeting dates. And I believe in our last meeting, we discussed that we would do the second Tuesday of the month at six o'clock. And I just wanna make sure that's alright with everybody still.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to establish the meeting date to be the second Tuesday of the month at six P M. That's a regular meeting, and if we need to meet.
Extras.
Extras, then we'll.
Yeah, we'll be on top of that.
On top of that. Well, I'd like the location to be here until we determine, I guess, where officially we're gonna meet. Because there's, the construction project, the town hall has us, and then the availability of space too, so I would say here.
Is this not always available? Because if it is, it seems to be a reasonable sized space with good parking.
This is actually really, realistically, you think it's the best option?
I do too.
I think in the evening it's generally available.
And it is usually available.
If we play in front of.
Seems like a good choice.
Yeah.
And if there's an occasion where we, we have advanced knowledge that the crowd's going to be significant because of a hearing, we could move to the high school auditorium if we needed to.
And actually, that room right there.
Right.
The room outside here works well too.
As Mr. President, I know.
Alright.
Can you second that motion?
Yes.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Mr. President, if you'll allow me, I'd like to also, after touring the subject, offer a motion that the regular scheduled meetings, being the second Tuesday of the month at six P M, is where normal, in routine legislative business will be conducted. And that other meetings set for specific agenda items essentially don't get bogged down with other items being brought to our attention last minute or whatnot. If folks know that the regular meeting is the regular meeting, then there's deadlines to, to be met. So I would make the motion that our, our regular scheduled monthly meetings are when legislative action is, is to occur.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good, thank you.
Now, we have any other topic reasonably anticipated to be raised by council members?
I've got a topic, a few months ago, I was, and I think Kevin remembers, I was placed on the, we have a, we have a regional nine one one committee that was formed between five towns, Ludlow, Long Meadow, Wilberham, Hamden, and us, to try to determine a location and, and the feasibility of a regional nine one one call center. And I, I'm on that committee, and as a matter of fact, I'm chairman of the finance part of that committee. And my question is, do you want me to continue on that, or wouldn't, you know, is it something that someone else would wanna consider? I mean, I have no problem continuing, but I wanted to, I didn't wanna just keep going to these meetings and all of a sudden have you guys realize, what are you doing? You know, so, so I figured I'd bring it out here, and if there's any comments or anything here.
I'll make a motion that Paul Federici continue to act in that position as long as you're willing to do so.
I will second that motion, I'll also add that, because I was also on the same committee up until my retirement last year, that if there's help, I can offer.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to.
So anything you can update or share with us?
Really, we're in our infancy. We had a, we actually had one meeting in Long Meadow, I think it was about a month ago. And we actually had a finance committee meeting last week, last Friday, but we were just setting parameters. We haven't really done anything, I mean, there's a proposal for, for a building in, in Ludlow, but we're in, like I said, we're sort of in the infancy of it. So as, as information becomes available, I'll, I'll share with the board.
To that end, historically, have there been other liaison positions that the selectmen took part in that we need to continue as a council?
Yeah, I don't know, with the town manager taking the executive role, I think he takes the majority of what we had for responsibilities.
Yeah, because we had liaisonships with all the department heads, but he'll, he'll be that now, so.
Fair enough.
Or she, ultimately.
There was though, we had a bunch, but now we're all, everything's all been, now we don't have to. Any further discussion? All in favor? Yeah.
Sorry.
All in favor of the motion, keep on, on the committee?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright.
I have another topic, you guys are gonna love this one. So we've all been invited to participate in the parade on Monday. I did get a correspondence that was passed to me that I'll pass to the president so that he can circulate it, assist instructions and whatnot on where to go, to line up for the parade and rules to follow and that sort of thing. But I, this is gonna sound funny to you guys, but I wanna bring up the topic of dress. Is everybody okay with whether they're wearing dress, like shorts, polo shirt? Or is everyone planning to wear a tie? Because.
I wasn't wearing a tie.
And I wasn't wearing a dress, so there we go.
Nor was I.
So shorts and polo shirts acceptable, kinda thing?
Yeah, in casual and, it's supposed to be hot.
It'll probably be slacks.
It's gonna be, it's still high for.
Right.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna bring some candy to hand out. Just don't throw it, hand, hand out.
I'm on that committee too, that's why.
We are unit one, position three. So when you get there. They're, they're expecting us at nine thirty at the high school. So when you get there, look for unit one, position three.
There is a, under this related topic, we have two issues that we need to take a look at anyway and consider seriously that we have two contracts. That the money, the contracts were signed by the selectmen. Paul?
Which contract?
T U and the police contract were signed by the selectmen with money not appropriated, which would normally have to be appropriated at town meeting. And the, some of those raises and whatnot are effective today. But they're not appropriated, so I mean, I don't know how we wanna address that. I know we had a discussion about it air quickly, and then it was actually brought to my attention that there's clauses in there that affect their, effective today. And it wasn't brought to me until yesterday.
So, I'm trying to think of a good way to bring this up. At least one of those, the question came up is appropriations here, well, up until an hour ago, appropriations. One of those contracts was signed in the month of June, and the Board of Selectmen had no authorization to sign it. In fact, that was in direct conflict to the charter. So I would suggest that that contract is not.
Valid in force?
It should be, it should be reviewed by council as to whether it's valid or signed or not. So at this point, I'm not in favor of appropriating money when it may not be a legal document.
Alright, and then, there was a piece too that I didn't, didn't know. But like I said, it was brought to my attention, you said, some of that is effective today, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, and we're all aware of it, potentially.
But the, the acting town manager can affirm these contracts with our approval during the acting phase, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So maybe, perhaps, that may be something that may wanna be done, and that we can have it on the agenda for our next meeting?
I, I would suggest.
Yeah, I know we talked about putting it on the twelfth agenda, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that there, if you get a phone call from one of the employees that didn't receive in their paycheck whatever raised it, you know.
But I would think that, once it's ultimately approved in the right legal channels, that any compensation do.
Will go back.
Would be retroactive, I think that's a.
But I'll, also, it's also worth noting that any contract is subject to appropriation. And until such time as the legislative body acts to appropriate money, it, it still isn't.
I just wanted to have a discussion about, so everybody's kinda on the same sheet.
But I don't think it's something we have, I know it's something we don't have to act upon today.
Today, right.
Because the, the rules, I mean, the, the raises really don't take effect till the money's appropriated.
Okay, thank you.
And then.
And it would be retroactive, so they're not gonna.
There's no loss of property, right, right.
Right.
Okay.
But the town, the acting town manager can affirm those two contracts between now and the twelfth with us on the twelfth appropriating and affirming, correct?
Yeah, I, I, I'll review the, the charter again, but my understanding of it is he can bring it to the council and with our approval, yes.
Perfect.
So are we, so I'm assuming, I'm, I'm not familiar with everything you guys are talking about, I'm assuming these are union contracts, so is this, so is this money appropriated?
No.
No.
So when will it be appropriated?
We would have to do that.
So we would vote on the appropriations, and then it would be active based on whenever?
Yes.
There was a hiring freeze with the Board of Selectmen after the charter was enacted. And, and so we, we need, but the town, new acting town manager would then affirm those decisions, hopefully. And then we would, we would agree during this interim basis to approve those hiring, because that's one of the few times we can do that. But we're also gonna control the appropriations of it. Which is always gonna be consistent. So then we can, hopefully those decisions will be affirmed, our next meeting, we can affirm and appropriate.
Right, I just wanted people to be aware that it was something that, so it's not a surprise. You know, if you got a phone call Tuesday, and they were like, hey, I was supposed to get a raise Friday, and I didn't get it.
We'll do our best, it's a little bit of work in progress.
So are, have they been made aware that this is?
I actually talked to the union president yesterday. Which is actually how I got made aware of it, that it was an, an issue.
Okay.
So we had a discussion about, I said, we'll bring it to the meeting today, try and at least have some dialogue. So we're going into it, we have a game plan about how this is gonna work out.
What's gonna resolve these types of issues is now, we actually, even if it's acting, we have an, we have a town manager in place. So the town manager will be the funnel to the council, and that, that's, they'll have somebody to go to and get answers essentially, so. I don't. These bumps that we're gonna hit in the road because of the way things have been going the last couple of months. But we'll get them resolved and.
Completely understandable, I just.
In that same vein, Mr. President, I think we, we are all aware and have been approached by the president of the library commissioner, I'm, I'm, I know I'm misstating the title, but that the library trustees have, were in need of a new library director and have done their due diligence and have vetted an individual whom they would like to offer a contract, but also fell into that.
Hole, dark hole.
The dark hole, if you will, between. And the good news, I suppose, for us is that the individual to whom they would offer a contract was willing to wait until July first, until the council became effective. So that likely should be something that appears on our July twelve agenda.
The July twelve agenda, and then we can have Bob, they can go to Bob and bring that forward.
Yes.
In the interim, yeah.
So Bob would make a recommendation to us, we would, you know.
You know.
If we chose to proceed in higher, then we can make that official, and I can quickly move forward.
I, I, I will state for the record, it, it'd be inappropriate for us to act on it today, because it wasn't opposed tonight.
I'm not suggesting that, but I think it's on our front burner.
I would like to state for the record that this process was conducted by a board that was elected by the people to serve as the library. Who's always done a, a, a superior job for the library. I, I see little reason for us to second guess their work. If they're bringing forth a candidate because they got caught in the middle of, under circumstances prior to this, they would have just hired the individual.
I think, maybe I'm not clear, I, I do not wish to re-vet anyone. I cer, I simply want to expedite the appointment of whomever they feel is their best person.
So we can move this process on the twelfth. Add it to the agenda.
Bob just wants to ask a question.
Maybe one comment, if the council felt comfortable is to go authorize the council president to represent the council relative to authorization of new hires, that would allow it to happen faster so that I would go procedurally make certain all the steps were taken and that Kevin and I could then to get together, and if we're agreement, Kevin representing the council would perhaps give me the authority to move ahead with the hire.
I don't think that makes sense.
Yeah, as much as I like that idea, I don't think we can do that. That's a good, I appreciate the suggestion.
Yeah, based on what I read, because it's an acting town manager, then they still have to interact with us in matters of this, but when it's a permanent town manager, they will not.
Right.
For hiring, firing type decisions.
Correct.
So although I'd like to do that, I mean, I think that's not quite in the spirit.
Is that money appropriated?
Yes, that, that money's part of, for the, for the library director position.
Already embedded in their budget?
I, yes.
The position?
The position is.
Compensation for that position?
I, I don't know, I, I don't believe they've actually entered into the negotiations with the person, because they haven't been able to offer the position at this point. But yes, there's a, there's money appropriated within the, yes.
So, so I just, one more question. On the twelfth, which is our next meeting, we'll then be able to make a decision, so they can.
Yes.
Yeah. They can, in good faith, let that person know, hey, you, to wait, you know, eleven more days.
Yes.
And we'll be able to render a decision one way or another.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, our town, acting town manager will be on the agenda, saying, affirming, you know, hopefully the two selectmen votes on, on the union matters, as well as the library, as well, you know, and anything else that may have come up. And then we can, we can quickly get that approved, obviously, subject to our, our approval.
As far as I know, on the first labor agreement, it was signed prior to the.
Police?
Prior to the election, so that one is, doesn't require revisiting. But it does require appropriation, so.
We'll have to put that on as appropriation.
Put that on the agenda for the twelfth. But I would be, you know, prepared to answer all the questions as it relates to appropriation, not just a total dollar figure, but.
Right, right.
May I, as wise as council, through to chair, council understands that any appropriations that are gonna go on your agenda are gonna have to come through the manager's office, not initially entertained by the council.
So the proposal would come as, as part of the, the contract settlement agreement, yes?
It comes, but it's gonna come, you can't place anything on your agenda unless and until you've received notification from the manager or the acting manager that they wish to bring it forward to for consideration. So I'm just making clear, I'm just saying, you say you should note to put these on the agenda. You should note to contact the manager's office to request whether or not you're going to reform.
I'd be interested, and now's not the form, but I'd be interested to, to see where you're coming up with that, because I believe that there's provisions in the charter for, for a council member to bring initiatives forward.
Bring issues forward, but the appropriate, but the budget and the appointment of individuals is assigned to the manager. So for that to be considered by the council, it has to come to you from the person under the charter authorized to do it.
Question from our acting town manager.
If I may, and it's working out here, the only thing, the only limitation I read in the charter of the authority of the acting town manager is hire, fire, and discipline. I don't see any limitations on contract signing authority or anything like that. That may be something you may wanna request town attorney to confirm, but as I'm reading through it, the only words I see that limit authority are, are relative. through it, the only words I see that limit authority are, are relative to hiring, firing, discipline.
I'll turn all that out. Anybody else have anything?
My thing is, I just want, one of our residents handed me a resume for, and I'm encouraging other residents as well, he's opened himself up to working on any of our committees, temporary, permanent, and so forth. So just asking that if other residents would like to do so, please let us know, because this whole spirit of volunteerism and community involvement has been outstanding the last couple of months with all the people getting involved, and we want to keep that going. So thank you to this resident, and, and future thank yous to others who want to get involved in our committees.
I think so.
Thank you.
Also, bringing forward from the appropriations committee, if you recall, it's a joint meeting that we had, it was a discussion of a, of a portion of the appropriations committee, what was a subcommittee in the appropriations committee looking at debt?
Yes.
And so you might want to move that forward to the 12th agenda, that we could officially appoint those folks as, as.
Members of the.
As a subcommittee, an official subcommittee or whatnot, that would authorize some access to town records and whatnot.
Okay. So. So if anybody has anything else?
Yeah, it did, it was brought to my attention this morning, it's a block party. Again, I don't know how they work, and I was told it's time sensitive, it's a July 3rd party, and obviously, when I'm meeting against July 12th. And again, you guys probably know more about this from the selectmen's office than I do, but I guess, you know, it's got all the corporate paperwork from the police and the fire, and they're looking to hold the block party on July 3rd.
Yeah, it's under the purview of the town manager, it's not a legislative.
It'll be up to you.
Very good.
You already said yes.
You already approved it here.
I said, you're here.
Your other, you already approved it, so.
All right, that's good.
Reapproved. Thanks.
And so that was, is it?
Yeah. That's good. We're moving on to section six, public comments? Anybody? It's open to the public. Anybody want, Marilyn?
Oh, jeez. Congratulations, everyone.
Kevin, there's a gentleman in there.
I will thank the committee for the library, Mr. Wire, and the chair of that board. We do have a candidate, you know, like last night cleared last hurles. During our last committee meeting, we did not have a forum, we don't have an official recommendation, but we have a name and a vote awaiting approval. And it can be moved up, since this is competitive, it would be helpful, because he's also entertaining other orders, offers, as I understand. It would also be very difficult if we lost him, and it's very difficult to create a committee as diligent and experienced as one that's been functioning the last six months. If we could speed it up, it would be, I think, in the town's interest, we do so.
Thank you.
I mean, they can work on it, and then we can just affirm it on the 12th, I don't know how much faster than that we could do.
Yeah, right.
Can I ask a question?
You?
Yeah. Um, sorry, Mr. Wire? Mr. Wire?
Yes, sir.
So is, is the candidate willing to wait till the 12th for a final decision?
He's been waiting for a while.
Yes.
I think we can persuade him, but I can't promise that.
Okay.
It depends on his other offers. But I'll be calling him.
This afternoon?
As soon as I can get to him.
Okay.
If I know about the 12th, if that's the appropriation.
Yes.
Not knowing anything about the candidate, the process, but once I get to understand the process and the candidate, and what's been done, perhaps I can put in writing, if I agree with the recommendation, that I will be recommending to the council on the 12th, this one, and might that be beneficial to your candidate?
Yeah, he's watching.
Not knowing anything about the process today, I can't admit to writing that letter, but once, hopefully, I could.
Well, that's how it makes sense, I mean, we're trying to secure a candidate that has waited for us because of this black hole thing that was created, not by them.
A letter of intent.
To say, our plan is to go with their recommendation on the 12th.
Yeah, I think they can convey that.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
I don't think you're going to have any stumbling blocks.
Very close.
Well, it's not going to have any stumbling blocks here, it doesn't appear that, it's only a formality at this point to, to follow the process for the 12th, but you can certainly tell them that.
To me, it won't, if it comes with the recommendation of that board, that board.
Right.
If it doesn't come with the recommendation of that board, then it might.
As long as it comes with your recommendation of your board, you should have no issues.
Okay.
Anyone else? No? New business? I think we did it, it was the street hall, the block party.
Yeah.
I just had, I know we brought this up at the last meeting, there's a number of vacancies that are, you know.
Imminent?
Yeah, imminent, I believe, today, or officially.
Yeah.
So what is, who's going to help with that search to move, is it's on our people then supposed to go to, Bob, here's our recommendations, and Bob brings them to us?
Correct.
So are there any recommendations for those open vacancies that he will also be able to address as soon as the 12th, or is, are there not other candidates, like the inspector position or anything? Is anyone aware of where they are in those search processes?
If he's ready to move on, they got plenty of time to add to the agenda before posting limitations, so if they're ready to move on any of them to bring forward to us for affirmation, there's time to post it before the 12th.
Are, is anyone aware of where they are in those processes?
We are, some, we could be, but plenty, we could be ready for some of those, and plenty of time for the 12th.
Okay.
That, some of those are going to then create other vacancies, probably within Town Hall somewhere, that, you know, we're going to have to then fill again, but the critical need positions that we had talked about at the last meeting, we should be in good shape by the 12th to. I know the building inspector, we have resumes.
We also have support from other, the other local communities.
Building inspector.
And I believe our plan with the selectmen was to satisfy that. One problem was, Marge would be the.
Right. Marge is actually moved, effective Tuesday morning, she will be.
Taking over.
Taking over for Lorraine's seat.
Mm-hmm.
Which then, and sort of do, doing two jobs, because if the clerk, the agreement with the clerk was that if she's needed in the clerk's office, especially when he's on vacation, she's the assistant clerk, so there's some legal documents that are requiring certain signatures. So she would help them as needed, but really, her primary focus would be down in the select, well, I don't know what the office is now, it was the selectman's office, the council office, town council office, town manager's office, whatever. And then that position, we had discussed posting the assistant clerk position at some point in the future, so. And I know the building inspector resumes were submitted, I don't know where we are in the process, if I was looking at them, but I know Dan is here, he might be able to tell us. Dan?
Yes, sir.
Do you, where are you as far as resume wise with the building inspector's position?
I turned them over, I don't know if you received them, but I have six resumes. There's only four of them that are qualified, that need qualifications, a certification, licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The other two cannot be hired.
Okay, so we have four candidates that are viable.
I think that, that, as I brought up the last time, that requires some further discussion because of the changes to that department.
Under the town manager.
In the near future, so.
Right.
I think we just need to talk about it more before we.
No, I agree, I just, you know, I know that there was a question out about where we are, I know that's sort of where we're.
Didn't, didn't we also have some discussion about, in the interim, until a thoughtful process can go forward to hire a new building inspector, that there was some willingness on the part of Long Meadow to assist us with, in critical times where you didn't want to hold up a permit?
Yeah, I know Dan can answer that.
Yeah. Including Paul Healy. Paul Healy, we can cover it for the next two weeks.
Okay, and he's the gentleman from Long Meadow?
Long Meadow, and I'll be paying Jerry for that, because I'm still going, I'm still licensed, and I'll, I'll be covering his vacations, even though I'm not retired. He's covering, what was the other question?
Pretty, no, I think that was it, that we could rely on, like mutual aid, if you will, to fill that until we could properly do the search, not the search, the, the vetting and the interviewing?
We had talked about the potential of hiring, hiring a temporary, a part timer or an interim.
Okay.
Right.
We had talked about that as well.
The town, too, I might just hope that.
No, no, go ahead, Dan.
According to Paul, his town manager or administrator in Long Meadow says you can cover vacations, but not anymore.
Okay. Mike, you had touched on this before.